Good evening, everybody. Thank you for those in the audience and them listening at home. I want to just read this quick announcement. In accordance with the open meeting law, Board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So we start the evening off with an eight o'clock hearing, public hearing on the transfer of a wine malt beverage license. I'd like to take a moment and read the public notice first. In accordance with Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen in Room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, on Monday, October 16, 2017, at 8:00 p.m. on the application of M.R. Redding, Inc., doing business as Mario Restaurant, Ronte, I'm sorry, Mario Restaurant, for the transfer of the wine and malt beverage license, license to be exercised at 20G Main Street, North Reading, Mass., in a one-story building occupied approximately 1,200 total square feet with kitchen, dining area, and restrooms, entrance and exit doors located in front and rear of the building, for the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, so as you read the hearing notice, we received an application for the transfer of ownership of a business here in town, Mario's Restaurant. I believe that there is a representative here of the petitioner. Perhaps we may ask him to come to the podium and give us a description of what his intentions are?
Sorry if you wouldn't mind, just state your full name.
And description is of Mario's, is that what you're looking for? It's a 40 or 50-seat restaurant that does about 60 percent takeout, has a small dining room that serves beer and wine. Food is roughly 95 percent of the menu. Beer and wine, I think, is about 5 percent of the menu. The location's been there for 30 years. We'd like to take it over. We've been in the restaurant business for 30-plus years and not really going to change much there, going to keep it as is, hopefully continue the success of what they've done. So that's pretty much our plan.
Any Board members have any questions? Yes, Mrs. Menupalli.
Just, I know you stated you've been in the restaurant business. Could you just state what other restaurants you manage?
Currently, I own a restaurant in Newton called Johnny's Luncheonette, has a beer and wine license. I own Tennessee's Barbecue. I license those out. I used to operate them. They all have beer and wine licenses, numerous other ones that I've bought and sold.
So you own those two currently?
I now license out the Tennessee's Barbecue. I used to operate them and I sold them to be a licensee, licensor of those. So I did that for about 10 or 12 years. Johnny's, we've owned for about three and a half years.
Do you, Mr. Chairman, so do you intend to remain the manager of Johnny's Luncheonette?
I'll be there about 30 hours a week. Ken Branza, who is also involved in Johnny's, will be there probably 45 or 50 hours a week, which will be the management team.
For Mario's or for Johnny's?
For Mario's.
Oh, okay.
Any other, Mr. O'Leary?
As far as your current Johnny's, are you at Johnny's? Are you on location now yourself personally at Johnny's?
No.
You're not?
I'm probably there 10 hours a week.
And then the, you're aware of tips training and all that, I assume?
We're at Serve Safe Tips, you know.
What about the current employees at Mario's? You're telling on retaining them or?
Retain as many as will stay. So hopefully, everybody will stay. The family is moving on. I think the mother and father retiring, the son's going off in his own business. So anybody else that's there, we'd like to keep. We haven't talked to them yet, but that's our plan.
Your own sentence, Mr. O'Leary. I'll let Mr. Schultz come back to you.
As far as the cuisine that's sold at Mario's now, are you still going to have the same type of dinners? Are you going to make it more of a takeout place? Are you going to try to keep it similar in style?
I think for three to six months, exactly the same, and then maybe make some changes. But, you know, we bought it because we liked what it was. It's homemade, authentic Italian, and so we're going to keep all the recipes and maybe upgrade the decor. I know the landlord has some plans for the outside of the building. CVS is going to have a freestanding building there, so, but for us, pretty much the same run its course. And that's what we did with our last restaurant, is just try to be in there more often and execute a little better maybe than they might.
And will you still provide delivery to the community?
Yes, that's a big part of it.
So have you made any major renovations to the building or in the interiors?
Will I?
Are you, yeah, any plans?
Not major, no, nothing structural, you know. I don't know, I haven't really spent much time in there, but, you know, furniture, flooring, you know, that type of stuff. The kitchen's in great shape, so probably just to the front of the house, and we'll really take our lead from the landlord to see what he does on the outside of the building.
Because today, if you want to purchase liquor there, you obviously get it at the counter or they deliver it to your table, but there's no plans to install a bar?
No.
Okay.
No, it's pretty small.
Okay, yeah, I just, just making sure.
Yeah.
And I believe the fingerprinting has been completed?
Yes.
Okay. And any other questions? Mr. O'Leary.
Did the landlord give you an indication as far as the timeline associated with renovations to the facility and to the parking and?
I thought it was maybe next spring or next summer. I did not ask him specifically. I think the plan is for everyone to remain open while this exterior is going. I think he's going to do it space by space, obviously.
He's going to build a new facility first, the new freestanding CVS.
Right.
And then East Gate Liquors is going to move into the CVS location, but there's going to be a renovation to the rear of the building.
Okay.
Where CVS currently located, tear down the East Gate Liquors and then.
Right.
But I just didn't know what the timeline associated with that.
He did not tell us exactly, just that we will be open through that, hopefully as much as possible.
And then, just, there had been in the past some issues in relation to dumpsters pickup and timing of the pickups and also frequency of the pickups to avoid rodent problems and things, specifically to Mario's over the years.
Mm-hmm.
You aware of those and?
He did mention that, so whatever the pickup, whatever is required, we'll do. If it's more, not an issue, so.
Okay, because I know Mr. Lucci had indicated a willingness, particularly to the neighbors there, to enforce and encourage the tenants there to have the pickups at a different time, rather than five o'clock in the morning, and also a frequency care point to make sure that they're sealed and minimize the.
Sure. Yeah, you know, the Board of Health did talk to me about that, so whatever he tells us to do, we will do.
And then, I just have a question. You provided in your packet here, and I'm not sure exactly what it represents, but different accounts, some of them foreign, Canadian?
I own restaurants in Canada.
Okay.
I married a Canadian. I was up there for 15 years. I'm from Oxford, Massachusetts. I'm happy to be back. I've been back for 20-plus years now, so, and I still have some, like a piece of real estate and two restaurants up there.
Very good.
Mrs. Menupalli.
Did you ever have any issues with liquor violations, either in Canada or at your restaurants here?
No, never.
Clean records everywhere?
Clean everywhere.
And just one quick thing, I think Mr. Prisco was asking you with regard to renovations or anything, but there was one thing noted on, there was one thing noted on the safety documentation as to the need for some sort of repair in the hood or ventilation and inspection?
Oh, the hood is, I believe.
Suppression system for the kitchen?
It's an annual inspection, so it had expired. I'm not sure if they got it inspected, but obviously before we take over the, I've talked to the fire department, and we told them that the day we take over, if it wasn't inspected, we would get it inspected.
Just so, one other thing is that, again, Mario's has been a terrific member of the business community and community as a whole, and we would hope that that would also continue to.
You know, it definitely will. I mean, I've had a lot of restaurants and I've built a lot of restaurants, and I recognize when there's something that has real value to the community, which supports it, and that is the reason we bought it, is to keep it as it is and make a few tweaks, but I wouldn't come to North Reading unless it was something, you know, a great business that just happens to be good timing, they're ready to retire, and we recognize what a great restaurant it is.
And then, one other thing, I just wish you much, much success.
Great, well, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to transfer the common victular wine and malt beverage license held by Arasio Inc., DBA Mario's Pizzeria and Mario's Restaurante, 20G Main Street, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
I have a motion to our second, second by Mrs. Menupalli. Any more discussion? I just want to thank the Mario's and their family and wish them well in their retirement. They, it certainly has been one of my favorite locations in town. My family and I have enjoyed it a lot over the years, so we wish them well and welcome you to the neighborhood. It's a wonderful community. I'm sure you're going to enjoy having a restaurant here as well. So that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, oh, I'm sorry. Is it okay that we finish the vote?
There's a second motion, I believe, in there for the common victular license.
Any opposed? None heard? Unanimous. You scared me there.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the common victular license held by Arasio Inc., DBA Mario's Pizzeria and Restaurants to Mario's Restaurante, 20G Main Street, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
I have a motion and a second, and you want discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take this time to, anyone here for public comment? Okay. Next agenda item, approve the 2018 retiree health insurance plan. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As the Board is aware, we have a, in addition to our active employee plans, which renew on July 1st of each year, we have a Medicare supplement plan that we've made available and make available to our retired employees for those who are Medicare eligible. That runs on a calendar year basis, and this is the time of year when we're looking at the plan for the upcoming year. As the community is, I think, well aware, we transitioned for the active employees as of July 1st from Harvard Pilgrim to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts for the active employee plans, and we received a renewal quotation from Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare for January 1st. We were surprised, we didn't expect to get one, but they proposed to renew with an 11.53 percent premium increase in calendar year 2018. And then we looked at a series of alternatives for a Blue Cross renewal, which were much more favorable in terms of the cost for the premium. There is a transition that's associated with any move from one carrier to the other and there's a change of formulary, but that formulary for prescription medication can change within any calendar year, even if you didn't change carrier. So we were initially looking at a recommendation for renewal. If you're looking at your attachment, it would be Exhibit Number One, to renew at a 2.69 percent premium increase. That was the initial recommendation. We had some discussions with the representatives of the retirees who really felt that if possible, they'd like to see us be able to move away for next year from the medical care copayment. When we looked at the alternatives, Blue Cross was able to construct a plan that did away with that copayment but increased the prescription drug copayment charges to offset the change. And so that leaves us with, based on our discussion with the retirees and the presentation that we made to the Insurance Advisory Committee on Thursday afternoon, with a recommendation to renew the plan under Blue Cross Blue Shield Option Exhibit Three, which would actually result in a .99 percent premium savings in calendar year 2018. I will note that I said to the retirees and to the IAC as well, that while this looks like something that's favorable for us for this particular year, as has been in the case for each year over the past few years, we'll be looking closely at any alternatives when we look for the renewal a year from now. But based on their feedback, it appears that this would be the most advantageous for the retiree and for the town as well, in terms of the cost. And so therefore, our recommendation is to vote the motion attached with the reference to Exhibit Three in the blank spot that's provided. And I want to thank the retirees for their candid feedback and discussion with us, as well as the IAC for its time on Thursday afternoon.
Any questions for the town administrator?
You need a vote from us this evening?
Yes, there's a motion in the packet.
Option Three?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the 2018 retiree health insurance plan, Option Three.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you for all the hard work on that. Review the 2017, 2018 sidewalk snow removal plans. Vote to approve a pediment order.
Maybe while you're pulling that up, we can, good, you got it, never mind.
It's all right, Mr. Chairman, I'll do the presentation from my seat over here.
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you, just make sure that I can get my voice into the microphone. So we have a brief presentation that we've put together with regard to the sidewalk snow removal bylaw, and I will note that this has been a continually evolving presentation over the past couple of weeks since the opinion of the Attorney General has come back to us relative to the actions at town meeting. So my hope is that this is the start of the conversation. Where the winter is coming upon us, my hope is that we are able to conclude the conversation in the beginning part of November, but we felt it appropriate to update the Board as to where things stand right now. And I want to thank the Public Works Director for his efforts on this and to try to pull together the information here. We're continuing to work with Town Council and with the Finance Department relative to the backend implementation that might be required for this, because it is extensive. But we do believe we have an avenue that will achieve the desire of town meeting and the desire of the Board as we understand it. So without any further ado, nothing. I hope this isn't too game show-ish. So we have a few slides. First is just a note relative to this issue, the operational challenges that the town has faced, and I'll go through them. Route 28, a four-lane road, two lanes of often wet, heavy snow is plowed by Mass DOT and its contractors onto the sidewalk. Many properties plow snow to a snowbank on either end of the property, blocking pedestrian access between properties. Some properties plow parking lots to the sidewalk and don't remove any snow except for the curb cuts, leaving the entirety of the sidewalk blocked. Some properties don't plow at all, and some properties believe plowing pedestrian access on their parking lot and not on the sidewalk itself is sufficient for compliance. So those are some of the operational challenges. The administrative challenges, the point of contact on the ground is a business owner or tenant, and is often not responsible for the maintenance at the property. Repeated police department visits to the property to gain compliance, and fines, if instituted under the bylaw, are appealable to Middlesex County Court and are often thrown out by the time the appeal is able to be heard, with the season often being over and the snow having melted. So just a little bit of the history, the original bylaw, as far as I can tell, was approved in 2002, after we had some enforcement difficulties in the winter of 2014, 2015, which was a difficult winter, obviously. We moved to ask town meeting to amend the bylaw in 2015 to allow the option of recovering costs for snow removal. We had continued difficulty achieving compliance resulted, resulting in recommended changes being approved at the June 2017 meeting, and those changes were effectively to change the fine schedule from a warning on the first offense, a $50 fine on the second offense, and a $100 fine on the third offense, to being a $300 fine per instance. The Attorney General approved the bylaw changes in September of 2017 with a condition that the town cannot assess the cost of snow removal as a punishment for non-payment of fines, that that was not an allowable use of the assessment of the cost. So based on that information and based on where we stand now, the recommended enforcement plan for the winter of 2017, 20, did you have a question?
Nope.
2017, 2018 would be as follows. Based on the premise of town meeting's desire that non-residential properties would remove snow from the sidewalk, and the Attorney General's opinion, at locations where snow has not been removed by the owner or tenant, DPW would remove the snow after 24 hours and assess the cost of the removal to the tenant or occupant, and we would have the ability to recover the cost via a lien on the property if the assessment is not paid within 30 days of its issuance. Fines would not be issued using this implementation. So effectively, how it would work, we have much more confidence on the front end of it than we do on the back end, but we do know we have the legal right to attach the cost to the property, which I think is ultimately where the ability to ensure payment occurs. It snows, no sooner than 24 hours after a storm, DPW would then go out to remove snow from the sidewalk, and in reality, we're talking about the stretches of Main Street that have paved or cement sidewalks on them. After the expiration of the season, there would be an assessment that would be finalized for the season, per property, by the Department of Public Works. And again, this would be for instances where we arrived at the location and the snow had not been removed within the 24 hours, requiring the town to remove it through its DPW. And the rest of this is actually procedural under state statute and our local bylaw. I'm not going to go through it because we seem to have found that we're doing a little bit of cutting-edge work here in terms of assessing the cost, so I'm not going to focus too much on that, but there is a backend process that effectively allows it to become a lien expense against the property owner.
Mr. Missary.
So the one thing we haven't discussed, or either that or I missed it, is if the town plows the sidewalk, right, somebody slips and falls on the sidewalk.
Excuse me, Mr. Missary, if you could do me a favor.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. If you could just speak into your mic.
Yeah.
So the folks at home could hear you. Thank you.
Someone slips on the sidewalk, who's responsible?
So we've received reasonable assurances from Town Council that their liability would not extend to the town for doing this at this point, and I'm sure Selectwoman Menupalli could speak to that as well, but we would not be incurring liability by doing or not doing it.
Okay. As part of cleaning the sidewalk, would we be putting down any sand or salt?
It's unlikely to be the case. It would most likely be looking at removing snow from the site. I defer to the Public Works Director, but I believe that would be the intention.
Correct, we don't clean sidewalks now.
It'll be just like we do locally.
Yes.
On the town sidewalks related to other schools.
Correct. And I do have a couple of more slides, perhaps that may answer any additional questions. So this is again the backend.
Sorry, Michael, if you could, if I could interrupt you, Mrs. Menupalli had a question, I believe.
Now, I do think it's important for you to just, if you can briefly explain that process, because there probably are business owners watching that want to know what happens from step to step, even though we all know it, it's important to explain that.
Sure, so, but the advice that we've gotten from Town Council relative to the implementation is that we would issue a seasonal bill if this were to be approved in the fashion that's being proposed, that would go from October 15th until May 15th, and that bill would assess all of those costs for the season. It'd be mailed pursuant to the tenant, pursuant to the bylaw, to the tenant or other responsible party at that location, but it would likely also be copied to the property owner, because that's ultimately where it would be leaned. And that's a bit of a nuance in the bylaw, which assigns the property, the responsibility to the tenant or other person responsible for the property, instead of directly going to the property owner. And should it not be paid, there's in a statutory process that gets followed where the assessment ultimately ends up in the hands of the collector to become a cost that's assessed to the property owner on a tax bill, and when not paid, ends up becoming leaned. So when it becomes a lien on the property, 99 percent of real estate transactions don't close without all of the, all of such municipal liens being paid off, excuse me, and the town would have its rights to it, and it would need to initiate a tax title-taking process if it were not paid within two years in order to begin to perfect that lien, although obviously, the decision to foreclose to recover the cost is something we'd have to look at closely. It's something I think the town knows we do very sparingly with regard to properties and actually taking ownership of it. And again, I'm not necessarily advocating that this is the best method, but it appears to be the only method available to us to affect doing the service and ensuring we can recover the cost. Did that answer your question? So just a slide here about the potential cost as we've looked at it, and the Public Works Director has put quite a bit of time with his staff in looking at it. The cost is going to vary depending upon what the snowfall is like, the weight of the snow, whether the snow is banked on the sidewalk, whether the snow requires actual removal or hauling from the location. But in the example that's put on the, on paper here, the Department of Public Works looked at a significant snowfall, greater than 20 inches perhaps. Total cost to remove the snow from the constructed sidewalks on Main Street, so we're not talking about the dirt patches or grassy patches that look like they're sidewalks, but the actually constructed sidewalks would total approximately $151,543 for that storm. We're talking only for a 120-inch storm. For the average property that has a sidewalk, when you go through all of the frontage, it ends up being approximately 179 feet of frontage for the average property. And for that average property, the assessment would be approximately $1,515 for that one storm. And again, the number could be higher, the number could be lower. It all depends upon the effort that's required to remove the snow. We have a pretty sophisticated piece of snowblowing equipment. The challenge with that piece of equipment is it won't plow through snow that's as heavy as cement, and the challenge with it is also that it needs a place to put that snow, which is what often results in us having to remove the snow using a front-end loader and a 10-wheeled or greater truck. This is just an estimate. Significant cost, obviously, with regard to this, and one that we felt we needed to begin a conversation about now in terms of implementation, significant cost for the town, if the town were to take on the responsibility. But right now, we have a bylaw that town meeting has approved back to 2002 that clearly sets that expectation, and we're looking for the best fashion in which to implement it. I'll just note that the cost isn't, it's a variable cost, it's not proportional, so it's not as if it was a 10-inch storm, it's going to be half of that. It just depends on the particular storm. Again, I'll just remind everybody, the reason that this option is what we're looking at is because of the concern that I think's been expressed by the lack of compliance over time, and that's not to say that there aren't a variety of issues that contribute to that, but I think that collectively, the Public Works Director, myself, and the police chief felt that the practice of sending the police department out to issue tickets that ultimately end up really not being enforceable was not the best use of the town's resources and was not addressing the issue of the public safety issue of getting the snow off of the sidewalks.
Mr. Schultz.
My concern is, and I voted against this at the town meeting, but it is the will of the voters, but just on behalf of the business of the voters, but just on behalf of the business community, and I know these numbers are certainly estimates, how do we justify giving somebody a $1,500.00 bill for plowing their sidewalk? How do we do that with a straight face as a town?
So, when we've talked with Town Council about this, what we effectively have to do is just assemble the cost of all the moving parts to go with it. So, in many cases, it'd probably be public works labor that's going to be out there, so our people. Whenever they've done this type of work, it's often done outside of the business day because there are other responsibilities that they have, so they'll be working at a nighttime or overtime rate. You're talking about using equipment and accounting for the wear and tear on that equipment at the rate that the federal government approves, which I believe how you assemble that, Andrew. You may be renting equipment to come in as well. You're probably going to need to involve the presence of a police detail in order to make sure that there is a party involved in this, because the stakes are high. Obviously, when we show up at somebody's property and start removing the snow, there could be some confrontation involved. And then there's an administrative factor that I believe the department's built into the rate as well to cover the back-end work, so to speak, that would be extensive here in Town Hall to implement this.
And I think there's another piece to that, too. There's another part of that response that has to be very clear. You know, this issue's been ongoing for almost since the day I arrived here over seven years ago. We've had that discussion in this room many times. It's been in front of Town Meeting many times, and the business community, we have not heard from them. We've told them this was coming. We've made, Mr. Schultz has gone out of his way to go to the chamber, share with them all of this information, and there hasn't been, seemed any issue or concern on their part about any of this. So, I think it's very easy to look anybody in the eye and say, "We've given you ample opportunity to address this issue. We've told you this is coming. You didn't come to these meetings when we posted it. You didn't come to Town Meeting, vote against it or talk against it." No one should complain. Unless any other board member disagrees with me, please let me know, but I think we've been very open and honest about this.
I would like to just comment about the discussion, because it's on the next slide. This has happened fast. We got an opinion back at the end of September. We're very concerned about the timelines associated with the implementation, because this is an issue that, as we learned in the winter of 2014 and 2015, it becomes a problem very fast. We wanted to review the proposed enforcement plan with the board tonight. Initially, even as recent as Thursday, we were thinking that there would need to be a vote of a betterment order at this point. At this point in the season, or if not very soon, we had a little further discussion, and as we look more closely at the statute with Town Council, we do not, we're not requesting that vote this evening. We do intend to talk with the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce to apprise the Chamber of what this plan looks like. We would like to have some endorsement of the plan as an enforcement model going into the winter season. I'll be candid, I think our hope is that we won't need to utilize it, and that through the enforcement, that we'll see a high level of participation with the limited amount of need for police resources to go out and enforce, but we're going to need to have the ability to make a determination pretty quickly because of the public safety implication that it's time to go out and remove the snow. Again, we're only assessing actual charges and projected actual charge, or projected charges, I should say, for the back end.
So the folks that do plow their sidewalks and salt and sand their sidewalks, they're not going to get this assessed?
So, I kind of go back to the first slide. You know, we talked about this, and we ran through all the options, including we put the plow down, and we go from one end to the other, and everybody pays, and there was an agreement that that would not be fair. That's not an equitable solution to a property owner or business that's been out there. In some cases, shovelled by hand to make sure that there's a path that's available. We're not looking to harm that business in that way, but there is a difficulty in this, and that is that, like all of us who shovel our own driveways, the snow ends up at the end of the driveway on either side of it, blocking the sidewalk, and that's not going to be, that's not a solution to achieve what we're looking to achieve, which is a safe pedestrian access point. So, it's going to involve some communication, which we, you know, reference here at the end, that we intend to mail an advisory to say, "You can't pile the snow at the end of your property," because in that instance, there will be time and resources required to remove the snowbank out of the way, even though you've done the rest of the removal. So, it will depend upon the compliance. You know, it will be a significant lift, and as I stand here right now, depending upon how the winter goes, there's also the possibility that we're not able to get out there in a timely fashion, because our crews have been working for 48 or more hours straight, and it's just not safe to have them do so. But this was an avenue we felt we need to have available to us.
So, what about the salting part of it? Or the responsibility for sanding and salting sidewalks?
So, that remains under the bylaw. The individual is still required to follow the bylaw there. I would suspect that, as is the case for what we do on our property, we're not going to be doing that in the Department of Public Works, nor do we have the equipment to easily do it, but that doesn't leave the person, a resident or, I should say, a business or commercial property owner, immune from a complaint being filed, needing to be followed up on and enforced accordingly. But, again, to, I think, the point Mr. Misery was making, we'd be looking to take the snow removal program that we do right now on the walking paths to the school and in front of municipally-owned property and extend it to Main Street. And I do want to say, as I noted in the first slide, we know the challenges. I mean, this is a four-lane road with the snow being plowed, it's being compacted there, but we're trying to balance that with the reality of a bylaw approved at Town Meeting that requires that the snow be removed and that it be the property of the commercial property owner, be the responsibility of the commercial property owner.
Mr. Schultz.
The follow-up on what the Chair mentioned, I think it's important, we do give the business community one chance to maybe at our next meeting to come in and be heard, and if they don't come in, you know, they've had their opportunity, but I do think we want to do this jointly with the business community, not just kind of jam it down their throats, that's all.
Understood.
Mr. O'Leary.
And I concur with the Chairman, though, to that point, and this isn't jamming anything down anybody's throat. This has been talked about ad nauseam for several years and several seasons and several Town Meetings, and the business community has been given adequate notice, for sure, and I totally agree that, you know, before we implement, that be made aware that we're implementing. Just to the numbers, again, it just seems as though $151,000 to clear the sidewalks on Route 28, that's sometimes more than what we spent an entire storm to clear the town. So, it appears, I think, maybe that's shocking our, but it doesn't appear reasonable. And again, that doesn't mean that, again, we don't spend $150,000, spend $150,000 on a storm to clear the town, it's a big storm. We're talking about how long of a stretch, or how many feet on 28?
Let's ask the Public Works Director to respond.
Andrew Lafferty, Public Works Director. So, in this situation, we took, as it was mentioned, a significant storm event. We looked at the last 10 largest snowfalls in Massachusetts, and they all range anywhere from 19 inches and up as kind of the big storm. In an incident like this, we would literally be hauling all the snow out of Main Street for the entire length of Main Street. So that's why, it is a significant event. It would be probably a five, four to five-night event with multiple trucks, a couple loaders, a couple police details, and a full crew. So, it's huge, there's no doubt about it, but that's what it would take to probably remove that amount of snow.
So, conversely, what would the cost be if, let's say, it was just a regular, you know, normal snowstorm, and you were going and plowing the sidewalks? What's the estimate for that, that would each owner be charged?
So, we kind of broke it, we looked at it in three different categories. We broke it down to an up to six-inch snowstorm, a seven to 19-inch snowstorm, and then a 20-inch snowstorm. And I'd probably reclassify the word "snowstorm." I think we're talking about the amount of snow on the ground, which could be, you know, two back-to-back six-inch snowstorms before we get out to those sidewalks, that's now 12 inches. So, you know, there is clearly a lot of, there's a wide range of definition in there. But when we look at a smaller snowstorm, a four- or five-inch snowstorm, that would typically be a very simple snow removal event. We would probably most likely just have a couple sidewalk plows running down the sidewalk with a police detail and maybe in a supervisor. So, you know, we looked at it as a per linear foot kind of unit cost. On the high end, that per linear foot was as high as $8.00 a linear foot, $8.00 and change, and on the low end, it was closer to $1.00 a linear foot. So, it really, the range is significant, depending on what type of event it is. The guidance through Town Council was to initially look at the larger event, because that's how the betterment, or at least the process, was intended to work, because we're not capable of incurring costs over, we're not capable of recovering those costs over and above what we had estimated as an assessment. So that would be more for notification purposes rather than actual? The intent for an actual event would be the realistic cost, and in the process that we see, at least at this point, you know, there would be a supervisor or myself, you know, out there at the time of the removal, making note of which properties had snow on them and which ones did not, so they obviously did not get charged, and then coming up with the realistic cost of what it took to remove that snow for that event. But we had to base it on, we had to base the estimate initially on the worst-case scenario.
Mr. Schultz.
Just a quick question. When we determine what the accumulation is, I know the sidewalks basically have two lanes of 28 on each side dumped on them. Is it the accumulation on the sidewalk or what the snowfall was just in the neighborhood? Because if you have two lanes of snow dumped over, like that three feet of snow on where the sidewalk is, so would that be considered a three-foot storm, or?
So, in a typical snowstorm, we may, we take a variety of measurements in a couple different places in town, just to get our quote-unquote "official tally." Other than the issue where if we had back-to-back snowstorms, then we would probably be, I mean, we would probably take actual measurements out there during the course of the event.
Like on the sidewalk, or before it's plowed? You know what I mean, how you're going to have a lot of snow plowed onto the sidewalk?
Correct.
Are we measuring the elevated level after the plowing?
No, we wouldn't be measuring the snowbanks or anything that they push out there. We would measure the typical snowfall, but the cost would really be based on what it takes to remove it.
Right.
So if they push their whole parking lot out into the sidewalk, it costs us a significant amount of effort to remove it, then the cost would reflect that.
Is that what you were going to say?
I'll elaborate just a little bit. Again, this is, you know, based on the advice of Town Council, trying to come up with some sort of a rate per inch, per linear foot, because there's two factors that go into it. But I don't want anyone to get the sense that, oh, it was only a six-inch storm, so it's going to be the cheaper the two. If it's six inches of very heavy snow, like we had in the March 12th, 13th storm of this past year, which knocked a lot of trees down, it's going to be more involved effort, and it's going to be the actual cost that gets assessed, whatever it ends up being.
Mrs. Menupalli.
So, this would be, we would still not be obligated to do the removal. This would be in somewhat of an emergency circumstance where it's a big event, a big storm event, and we need to clear off the sidewalk or something. In other words, we're not going to, we're still not bound to clear off the sidewalk. So I think that's how our bylaw was implemented.
So, to answer the question, our obligation is to enforce the bylaw, and in theory, we could continue to go out and issue fines and say that we're enforcing the bylaw, but the feedback we've gotten is that, you know, oftentimes, for whatever reason, that's not leading to the snow being removed. I don't think that I could, I don't think it would be fair for me to stand up here and say that the department is looking at this as a last-case scenario for the worst of the worst storms. It could be that we have, I mean, I think we had a six-inch storm either last December, end of last December, or the year before that, and that compliance, you know, was a challenge, and there could have been any number of reasons why, it was an early storm, who knows why. But I think that when we get into the season, presuming we receive authorization, it's going to become a bit of discretion. What's the level of compliance, and is it worth the effort out there? I don't really think that the Police Chief, myself, or the Public Works Director are interested in going out and enforcing the fine structure with the possibility that we're going to end up having to go forward and remove the snow anyway. So that's why the recommendation is what it is, which is that there isn't compliance that we'll go out. I mean, it could be we go up and there's only one property, and, you know, that we're only removing the snow from one property. I mean, there'll be a bit of an upfront cost associated with mobilizing the crew to get there, but I'm going to presume that the Public Works Director's going to use his knowledge of where the sidewalks are and assessment of the condition to determine when he recommends that to be the case, with input from the Police Chief as well. Any other questions?
To the point, I guess, I guess it was my expectation, or our expectation, when this was proposed and supported, that we'd implement it, because the other one wasn't working, you know, and we weren't able to easily enforce it, and the level of compliance was not very good, so taking more extreme measures. Town Meeting passed it, and I guess the expectation would be to enforce the bylaw, and the best way for us to enforce it is to implement it.
Well, yeah, for us to enforce it, it's a very expensive alternative.
It's expensive, but I think that the expectation is, is that this is what's going to occur, rather than police officers going out knocking on the door, warning, $50.00 fine, $100.00 fine, have them ignore it, you know. It's still not have the snow removed, and the issue is still there. It's cheaper to pay the $50.00, $100.00 fine than it is to have someone else contract to come and do it, or in this particular case, it'd probably be cheaper to have a contractor come do it, which is part of the initiative here to get people to comply on a more regular basis. So, it won't take too many storms for...
No, and I don't want anyone to think that this is a scare tactic. It's a reality check. It's something like we've talked about...
And again, the expectation from a safety standpoint is to have pedestrian access on the sidewalks, safe access. And again, with the non-compliance, people are forced to walk around, snowbanks out into 28, and that's putting, not only themselves, but also people who drive on 28, you know, in harm's way, so.
There's a lot of residents that live on 28. They live there for, a lot of them live there for a reason, so they have access to all the services along that road by walking, you don't have to own a car. That's why we're doing this, so. That's one of the beauties of living here in North Running. Okay? Any other questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, in terms of next steps, we'll be reaching out to the Chamber, have further discussion with the Executive Director relative to where we stand, and expect that this will be on the agenda for the November 6th meeting.
Yeah, there was a proposal made by Chairman, I mean, by the House Selectman, Schultz. I think we've met with him enough, and I think we've made very clear. We haven't made, we haven't voted in any betterment bylaw yet, or whatever we're calling it, so I guess there's still some time to have some discussion, but it's not going to change. It is what it is.
Yeah, I think next meeting, they should be heard, and we can hear what they have to say about it, and we will vote on it.
Well, you know, again, we didn't make the decision. We've got to be very careful. We did not make the decision. Town Meeting made the decision. I'm not going to change what Town Meeting voters said. It is what it is. We'll certainly listen and try to be accommodating where we can. Town Meeting was the opportunity to get this figured out.
Voters voted.
Voters voted, and we've been doing this a long time. So thank you, and thank you, Andrew, and your staff, for putting this together. I know it's a lot of work, but much appreciated.
Good luck in advance.
Hopefully, we won't eat it.
Hopefully, we won't eat it, don't we? Let's hope.
All right. Let's see, next is the... Discuss appointment of Town Council.
Mr. Goburna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item's on the agenda based on some discussions that you and I have had this year, and also going back a year or so, maybe even more. The appointment of Town Council is under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, and it's technically an annual appointment, although I don't know that it's been voted upon in recent years. When we look back at our records, it's probably been since 2013, or maybe even prior, that the vote was taken. Chapter 30B does not require a competitive procurement process to designate a contract for Town Council. We don't have a contract, so to speak, in effect with them at this point in time. We simply have an hourly bill rate that we pay, and I think the public sees us addressing their payment on a monthly basis when the bill's submitted to us. I think this agenda item's on there to determine whether the Board wishes to go forward with requesting proposals for Town Council services. I would strongly recommend that we not pursue an invitation for bids, rather look at the qualifications relative to a firm, as well as their cost proposal, rather than the lowest bid. That would be my only recommendation to the Board.
Any discussion on the Board? Mr. Misery.
I don't have a problem going out for bid, but I think, as Michael just said, that... I don't have a problem going out for bid, but I think, as Michael just said, that I think we have to carefully construct it such that we put down what's important to us, and it might not be the price. That would be my only concern.
It's a valid concern. Does the board have a recommendation? Mr. O'Leary?
So, explain it again. We're not required...
You are not required to go out to bid, or to request proposals.
And we're not required to have a contract?
Not, not to my knowledge. I defer to Selectman Mani Pelli, but it's never come up.
I think it's a good idea to have a contract.
Yeah, it's okay to have a contract.
This is your long-term legal service provider that we've been dealing with.
Yeah, we've been dealing with a couple on page for I don't know how many years now. But first of all, I think they provide a great service to us. I know they represent close to a hundred other communities, or in excess, whether it be in, I think it was ninety-some odd as regular council and another forty as special council. They've had, you know, they, they do have a vast amount of experience. And again, I think their hourly rate is rather reasonable in relation to the services we get. And again, I think the, the rate is reasonable. I think their ability to respond to our inquiries are very good, in short, because of their knowledge base and the expertise that they have. And I'm satisfied. I mean, I have no problem signing a contract with them, entering a contract with them, but I don't find a need, a compelling need to put a proposal back out there, because there's no dissatisfaction. And I, and again, I think we can survey, if we wanna survey what the rates are out there for other town council, that's fine, that's a good exercise to go through, but it's not always about the dollars and cents to, to buy that type of expertise for the prices we're paying. We're getting a good deal.
Anyone else? Mrs. Mani Pelli?
Just to add to that, and I would, I agree with Selectman O'Leary. I think, I, it seems to me they have quite a bit of the historical or institutional knowledge to, that, that they're able to address the legal needs, knowing, because they've been here for a long time. But I, I would tend to agree, and I do think their, their rate is, I don't wanna say low, but it's extremely reasonable.
Reasonable, for everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, since we started exchanging some email on the data as it came in, I was doing some research on it, and I, you know, learned a little bit more about all the other types of firms that are, exist throughout the Commonwealth. And I certainly have learned that, yeah, this isn't probably a bad deal after all. They certainly have a great reach for expertise within their organization, which allows them to wrap, get back to us in a very prompt manner, in a lot of factors. So I think that adds a lot more value than, than just money. So, you know, based on my short educating myself and the whole thing, I, I'm not sure we really need to do anything. I think it was worthy of us having a discussion.
We probably should update the fee agreement, though, just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody disagrees there.
Happy to do that.
I think, just for public edification, I think they went up five dollars.
Yes.
So...
And it was the first raise since...
The second, second raise. They went up last year five dollars from 180 to 185, and then from 185 to 190 this year.
And I think most people hiring an attorney know that standard hourly rate for someone with built-in ten, fifteen, twenty years of experience or more is gonna be quite a bit more than that, so.
Yeah, that's true.
It seems those two increases occur after Mr. Koppelman's retirement. For whatever that means.
They've been a good partner, certainly.
I would agree.
All right, next, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is review the status of the Community Access Corporation NORCAM contract.
Mr. Gobert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in the process of our reviewing records associated with the negotiation, ongoing negotiation with Comcast for a successor cable franchise agreement, we reviewed the agreement that the town has with NORCAM, and that agreement dates to 2008 or 2007, if I remember correctly. And it is tied to the latter expiration of the two cable franchise agreements that were in effect at the time it was signed. So in effect, it was an agreement with Comcast, which expires in January, and an agreement with Verizon, which expires in June, June 19th, if I remember correctly, 2018. And so I felt it prudent to put this on for discussion as a planning effort. NORCAM is, provides a substantial service, and they have a substantial operation here in, in town, as would any possible future cable access corporation provider, something that we need to be looking ahead at, out in the distance, as an important issue. I did have the opportunity to have some discussion with town council, to see if there was a recommendation relative to how to proceed, and their recommendation was, again, to use a proposals process, evaluation of proposals, when looking towards a, a contract in the future, based on his review of the procurement law. There've been some changes in the procurement law, as I understand it, that maybe not as, may, may not have been, that before the changes, they would not have been as restrictive in their recommendation, but based on the changes, they are recommending that, that we pursue a, a request for proposals. You know, the, the market that's out there, I'm not really sure that there's, that we, I'm not sure what there is out there, to be honest with you, but I think it's something that would need to, we would wanna advance in conjunction with the Cable Advisory Committee. I did reach out via email to Mr. Carboni, I see he's here, and as well as to Mr. Ferriello, who's on the board, just to advise him of this conversation, so they were kind of aware of where things stood on our end, and, you know, that we were looking to move things forward so that we would be able to have everything in, set come next June. There is a provision in the contract that allows for up to six-month extension of the term, which would take us a lot of part of the year, that, that would be available to us if, if it were necessary. I've also had some informal conversation with both Mr. Carboni and Mr. Ferriello to understand their intentions. They're very much, I think, interested in continuing to provide the service, so, you know, we'd look forward to, to seeing a proposal from them moving into the future.
So when will you start the proposal process?
I, I think we need to start soon, and I think one of the challenges is that we have a concurrent effort ongoing with our Cable Advisory Committee with Comcast, and then we have the Verizon right on the heels of it. So there's a lot of work that would need to be done with regard to this, and while I have some familiarity, I'm certainly not the subject matter expert in the field, so I, I think the process needs to start, but I, I'm, I'm concerned about the timelines already, get based on the fact that we have two contracts that are expiring with the cable providers.
Okay. I just a quick question. It's been many years since we've seen a full audit. Is there a date for them to have a full audit? It must be coming up.
So their financials they provided to us, I believe, in June, which I think was in the board's correspondence at a meeting in June or July. I think, are you speaking to the annual review that we do with them?
Yeah, but there was supposed to also be a, there was an agreement in place a long time ago that we, like every three years, we would have an account, they would have an accountant committee to do a full audit.
They do that. We did it this year, we submitted it.
Did we have it?
I, I think, I, I remember seeing an audit. Again, I, I don't know whether that's the, to the extent you're, you're referencing, but it should be in the correspondence for either June or July meeting, I think.
June, July meeting?
June or July meeting for this year, yeah. It was a correspondence that came in, it was, I believe, in the board's correspondence.
Okay, so it was in the correspondence?
Yes, yeah.
I probably missed it. I'm not as diligent as I should be, looking at all the correspondence. Okay?
And I, believe, and I'm, I'm kinda looking to Mr. Carboni, but I believe they were at a board meeting in the summer of 2016, is that right, for a presentation of their financials? You, you attended a board meeting. And Mr. Strobel was here, I remember as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any more discussion on this? Board members, good? Okay. Appointments of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. So under the liaison assignments, we did assign two individuals, and we just have to go through the formal process to officially appoint them. So do we have some motions?
There is a motion for the appointment.
I don't know if I should make this motion or not, since I'm...
I'd be happy to make it.
Good, Mr. O'Leary.
Sorry.
Since I gave up the seat.
You're giving it up.
You're giving it up. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint the following individuals of the Board of Selectmen as members of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a term to run concurrent with their elected terms. Catherine Mani Pelli through May 2018, Andrew Schultz through May of 2020, replacing previous Board Selectmen members Stephen O'Leary and Jeffrey Yule. I think Mr. Masery's gonna second it, right?
I just did.
Okay.
Any more discussion? I had a motion and a second. None, no discussion heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
There you go, you can sign, you can sign your own slip though.
Do you want to sign it? I should, I should.
You can sign, sure.
Okay. The next agenda item is to discuss the Route 28 Motors review compliance.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before we get started...
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
I filed a conflict of interest form with Ms. Stats at the town clerk's office today. I have represented Route 28 in the past as an attorney before this Board of Selectmen, so I'm gonna recuse myself from this whole item.
Why don't you, don't stand outside, it's getting awfully cold out there.
Mr. Chairman, I too will be recusing myself from any discussion, motions, or, or action on this particular matter if the board decides to take it, because I happen to have a brother that holds a Class II license in the town, so to avoid any appearance of conflicts, I will not be participating in the discussion or voting.
Okay.
I'm not going on the hallway with him.
No, that's okay. All right, Mr. Gobert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in response to some discussion, Mr. Chairman, you and I had, as well as some complaints I've received relative to the number of vehicles at Route 28 Motors, I asked the building inspector to inspect the property for compliance with the required number of vehicles, and he conducted an inspection on Wednesday of last week. He identified as a report that's in your packet here, thirty-six vehicles on the lot. The owner was present and agreed to remove the excess cars by the end of that week. When a reinspection was conducted the following day, that Thursday, as is in the report here, all of the vehicle, all of the excess vehicles had been removed, and the number of vehicles on the property was twenty-six vehicles. And just for the edification of the board members who may not know, there is a used car license, a Class II used car sales license at this property, and the agreed-upon number of vehicles on there is twenty-four in the parking lot to be, basically, either for sale or in the process of being prepared to be for sale, and two to be stored in the storage bays for a grand total of twenty-six. And that'll, that leaves two additional parking spots, I believe, for your staff, and I believe the customers come in and park kind of perpendicular to all the vehicles that are in there. Within that number of twenty-four vehicles outside and two inside, there's a restriction that no more than sixteen be labeled for sale at any one point in time. And this is all information that's basically been memorialized by the establishment's attorney in a report dating back to 2013, prior to my arrival, that I think all of the parties agreed to. Clearly, with thirty-six lots, cars in a lot, there was a, a number in excess of that. I will tell you that I believe the building inspector had conducted a preliminary inspection a couple of weeks prior and found about thirty-five vehicles on there, and doesn't appear that any change took place. And as recently as today, the building department, when they were out there, observed twenty-nine vehicles on the property, and the police department observed thirty-one vehicles at a different point in the day. So we got some concerns, some complaints that were referred to us by board members, and I'm sure by, I'm sure that was observed by others, and I, I think, I think there's some concern about the number of vehicles actually being maintained. And our, our concerns were not, concerns were only heightened when we looked at the website, which indicates that fifty vehicles are for sale at the establishment. So it's fortunate that you're here, and perhaps you might be able to reach the microphone and maybe offer us a bit of explanation as to what's going on at Route 28 Motors.
Can I just ask, if it's okay with you? So what do we permit on the license? Sixteen cars?
The, the, I, I don't have a copy of the license in front of me, but I understand it's sixteen may be for sale at the property at any one point in time. The property has a site plan approved for a total of twenty-four to be parked on the property outside and two inside.
But site plan for twenty-four spaces doesn't mean twenty-four cars there. That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So the permit that gets granted is sixteen for sale.
Sixteen for sale at any one point in time.
Right, because the other parking spots are for customers to come and go and, and workers to, to park there. It's not fill up every spot that you can.
So there was a previous, through you, Mr. Chairman, a previous site plan that was approved, I believe, by the Planning Commission, and allowing for the storage of vehicles that were not for sale, unregistered on the property, for, to bring the total of number of vehicles up to twenty-six, including the two in the garage, only sixteen of which may be for sale at a, at one point in time. And there's a similar arrangement that's been made on the southbound side of Main Street, right across the street. I think that property's a little bit less of a challenge because they have designated spots out front where the for-sale vehicles are parked, and they have an on-site yard that's fenced in where vehicles are stored when they're not on the lot for sale.
If I may say something?
Just identify yourself, please.
Yes, my name is Hager Vakili. I don't know if I should stand up.
You can sit, that's fine.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Hager Vakili, the owner of Route 28 Motors. I've been in the auto business industry for over fifteen years, and I've been a, a owner at Route 28 for about three, four years. And to what you were saying earlier, it used to be sixteen, and when we had the meeting two, three years back, and they bumped it up to twenty-six cars for sale, twenty-four outside with two inside. It, the sixteen was changed to twenty-six, and I think there's a copy of the records you may be able to get.
Who, who changed that, though?
The committee ruled on it with the...
This board did?
Yes.
We'll, we'll get a copy of the license, just so we have it in front of us.
Yeah. The, the place fits more than physical parking space of twenty-six.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry, please finish.
No, do, do you know the number of parking spots?
There's, there's a site plan that identifies, I think, twenty-six spots on it outside. So I'm not even sure where you're...
That's it. Does not fit more than that.
Yeah, but then how would this board have given permission for twenty-six? Because if it's, if there's no room for customers and there's room for workers...
I'm not so sure about that, yeah.
I don't know that this board ever did permission for twenty-six. I believe the number is sixteen, but...
It's twenty-six.
It is twenty-six. We had the attorney Schultz was in the...
No, it's, it's twenty-six, but I believe the sixteen for sale is still...
No, I can't read it.
Did this board grant that?
Yes, in 2016. So the number is, it's recorded as twenty-six, twenty-four outside and two inside, with no distinction for whether they pursue...
Was that renewal, a renewal?
That was a renewal, yes.
Yeah, so when did it change from sixteen to twenty-six?
We'd have to go back and look at the...
I believe about three years ago.
At the history.
Yes.
Because I don't, I don't remember entertaining a petition on a change.
It was a bit of in prior to your time on the board.
Hold on, hold on. It doesn't matter. The license is the license, we approved it, and that's okay. But you, you're still not me, even meeting the license. I've been here a long time.
Yes.
And I've had you in front of us with this problem before, and it continues to be a problem.
Okay.
All right.
If I may respond to what your concern is.
Go right ahead. I'm gonna give you one, just a few minutes.
So, when, before it was at sixteen, that was part of the problem, where we came up to twenty-six. I had a, a storage area, a detail shop at the dog place, the, the bark, I forgot the name of it. Anyways, about a few weeks ago, they went and they offered the landlord more money, so I had to take my cars out of there. And, and I explained that to the inspector. So it, it overloaded a little bit, that went more. I have another storage in Reading, which I moved the cars now, if, anytime you like to have someone inspect or yourself, it is down to the numbers that it should be, and it is at the twenty-six, and I try to keep it even one less, so that, you know, cars come in and go. So I have complied to that. As far as cars on the website, we have, you know, the storage that, we don't have to have all cars on the site for sale. So we have cars that go to the auction or, or the storage in Reading, which would be same as across the street where they have six cars, and they have forty-something cars or whatever that are, that have on the facility for sale. But I, I do do good business, I don't, to my knowledge, I don't have any complaints as far as, you know, with the customers that come from locally or further that I had any issues with. I do my best to keep it at the numbers. As any business, the traffic comes in and goes, and one day it may go one or two over, but we do move it. So, maybe on that day, the gentleman came, and I explained to him, he saw it. But I was put in a situation that I had to get ten cars out of a place because someone went and offered double the rent that I was paying there. So, unfortunately, that's the timing that it fell through. But I will be responsible, you know, doing business just in the three, four years. I don't believe you have received any complaints on me or my business here. I try to do the right thing every time and each time, and I satisfy my customers and keep a good name and reputation out there. And I improve the property to make it look better and cleaner, and I always maintain it for the city and, you know, myself.
Anyone? Yes, Kate.
Do you have a second-hand dealer's license in Reading or just storage? How many cars in Reading?
It has a twenty, twenty-one or twenty, with two, three in the showroom, so it's about twenty, I'm sorry, it's twenty-one outside, twelve in the back, it's about thirty-something that's a car license for that.
Where is that located?
It's a four-mile street, you know, where the Ford Collision Center is at Enterprise. That's where it's...
Do you, so you're taking cars back and forth between the two from Reading to North Reading?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Gilberto, did you have anything else to say before we wrap this up?
I'll just add that I, I did have a conversation with the police chief this afternoon, and I think he, you know, certainly recognizes that you did need to move a number of vehicles, and you did move them in a short period of time last week, and that certainly doesn't go unnoticed. But I think that you have, you have a maximum at twenty-six.
Yes.
And to your point, you need to manage to that, that maximum.
Absolutely.
Of twenty-six, which means if you're getting a delivery of three, three got to go before the delivery gets there. Because it didn't, it didn't help things when we went down today and in two separate inspections, you were still above twenty-six, and it wasn't by one vehicle, it was by three and five vehicles respectively, so.
Yes.
So, I want to just put it this way. You're incorrect about the complaints. We had a previous selectman on this board, Mr., Mr. Fody. Mr. Fody complained many times. He used to come in here and report to the board constantly about your location. How many this day, how many that day? It was after we approved your license, it seems like every time we get close to renewing your license, you clean up the lot. Several days after we approved the license, your lot gets loaded up again. I'm only speaking for myself. Been dealing with you for a long time on this issue. Your license coming up for renewal in two months, and I can tell you how I'm going to vote. It's been a constant issue. I've spoken to the police chief myself. It's been a constant issue. You, you've said the same exact things to us three, four years ago. We even increased your lot size because of this issue, the amount of cars you could have, and you still went over that. It's all lip service as far as I'm concerned. I think it's been disrespectful to this board and how you've handled this license. You see, you certainly, remember, license is not an entitlement, it's a privilege, and you certainly have handled it like it's been an entitlement. And it's your own fault. You have no one else to be upset with but yourself. You've been warned on so many occasions, and the previous selectmen's on this board have complained about it, the current administration's complaining about it, and it doesn't seem to end. So, this discussion's over for the evening. I just wanted to make sure the board was well aware that we have your license renewal in two months, and we can just address it then.
Okay? Now, Mr. Masari?
I've said quietly here, and I, I guess I could appreciate the issue of you losing space and having to move some cars there temporarily, but put that aside, I've been on the board for quite a while, and it seems like we have this constant repeat where we get complaints, we go by, and the volume in there grows, and then when we call you to the table, it goes away for a few weeks, and then over time, it comes back up again. The permit is for twenty-six plus two, that's what should be there.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four plus two, I'm sorry. And, you know, you shouldn't be exceeding it ever. And if there's an emergency, you could notify Town Hall that you had to deal with your emergency for a couple of days, and that would have, you know, I'm, I'm sure they wouldn't say...
Maybe the site just isn't right for you.
Emergency's happened, but, you know, the trend is, and it's been over a bunch of years, that you've been in charge, you've owned that place, that it's been an issue.
With all due respect, sir, last year, was there any issue on this? I don't recall, last year?
Yeah. It's, it's a constant problem. So, we're not going, it's not a public hearing, we're not going to have a debate about it tonight. We're going to see you in two months. You can just, you can dress, you have the opportunity to address it during the, the license renewal. So, I just think you should prepare for your, prepare for that. That's, you know, the only time I think we have the opportunity to, to address it is in two months when we have the...
What do you suggest by preparing? I'm going to do my best, just keep my numbers out. What do you like me to do?
I, I would, if I, if I might, I, I think you need to make the commitment right now to this board that, that that's your max. You're not going to have any more than twenty-six cars, period, every day, even in an emergency. Use your Reading lot in an emergency. Maybe they don't mind, but it's clear people here mind because that's why you're here. So, can you make that commitment that every day, period, so that we're not going to have any enforcement official or police or anyone over there seeing more than what you're allotted, which is twenty-six in total?
You have competing firms in town that sell automobiles, and every one of them is staying in compliance. You've been the only one that I sit here and have this constant issue with every year. And if Mr. Fody was here tonight, he, I'm sure he still has his record on how many times he's gone by there and brought back to this board and complained over and over during his tenure on this board. So, okay, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, though, for joining us tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Vote to approve the maximum useful life of the fire vehicle. Can we keep going out here? Is that possible? Mr. Schultz, we are, vote to approve the maximum useful life of the fire vehicle. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, there is a motion in the package for this. This is a fire department vehicle that is being purchased pursuant to the approval at the June Town Meeting in the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. It was approved in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and the financial plan calls for a borrowing term of twenty years, which requires this board by the vote of the, by, this vote by the Board of Selectment in order to effect that borrowing.
Any discussion? Any questions for the town administrator? I'll take a motion.
All right, it's a long one. Mr. Chairman, I move that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment to be financed with the proceeds of the borrowings listed below, authorized by the vote, Town, vote of the Town passed June five, two thousand and seventeen. Article sixteen is hereby determined pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-four, Section seven, Subsection one, to be as follows. The purpose fire engine three, the borrowing amount five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, the maximum useful life is twenty years. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that such a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours or in the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative message of service prescribed or approved by the Attorney General is set forth in nine forty CMR twenty-nine point oh-three, Subsection two, Subsection B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in conjunction with the subject matter of this vote were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GL Chapter thirty-eight, Sections eighteen through twenty-five as amended.
Mr. Masari.
Should not the maximum useful life? I have no problem with the twenty years, but should it be the minimum useful life? Now, this sort of implies that at the end of twenty years, the fire chief's going to come back and say, well, we want a new fire engine, maybe we don't need one.
Have we? And the question in addition to that is, have we ever done this before? I don't remember.
We have done it before. I'm looking to the, it's more for financing purposes.
Yeah, I understand it's for financing purposes, but minimum useful life should satisfy...
It's just, it's just only for this one engine, though.
This is for the borrowing to be a twenty-year term.
Just for this engine.
I understand.
Just for the borrowing.
So, the short...
Just for this one engine.
Thank you.
Not to declare that...
That's right. For this one piece of equipment.
It doesn't mean that we have to buy another one in twenty years.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
No, I understand that.
It's like my twenty-two-year-old vehicle is still running good.
Right. But why would we say maximum useful life? Why wouldn't we say minimum?
So, my only response is that this is what bond councils require us to vote. I don't really know why it doesn't say minimum.
I know, I think it's, it's contemporaneous with the bond.
It's the maximum useful life for bonding purposes.
Yes, right.
I understand that. All right.
Do we want to amend?
Please don't, please do not.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second. Any more discussion? None being heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, through you...
We've done it for thirty years, and then only financed it for twenty, that'd make you feel better.
No, I, I just, you know, I, I just...
I just brought the statute up, you can go thirty. That's what I said, go thirty.
Twenty years from now, a fire chief, whoever, is going to come back and say, I want to replace the vehicle, because that's what it said in the...
Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, through you. I believe there's a certification that needs to be signed by the clerk of the Board of Selectment, but it may not be in the design folder this evening. So, Mr. Schultz, if we could maybe, if you get your signature tomorrow, that might be good. Thank you.
Okay. Moving right on. Pool table license renewal, sports, spirits, and steaks, one seventy-eight Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, through you. This is a license that the board voted to issue in calendar year two thousand and sixteen for pool table at sports, spirits, and steaks. Applicant did not apply for renewal until just now, although the, under the statute, the license is to renew, I believe, on either April first or May first. So, we've reviewed the application, and it is complete, and we're asking the board to take affirmative action to renew the, the license for the, the balance of this one-year term, which will be till next, I believe, April.
They did receive the letter and everything back in, prior to April, right? Did we submit a letter to them?
So, they received a license that was granted by the board back at that time, but I do not believe we issued them a renewal notice out of our, out of the administrator's office.
So, it's something that they have to remember to do on their own?
Yeah, well, because this one falls on an anniversary that's different than the rest of the calendar, calendar year licenses that we have, it's the only reason that this one's treated separately.
Cool.
So...
Any questions?
Just how come this isn't done like in December with the really, calendar year?
The term, the term renews in May, that's why, by, under state statute.
Good.
Okay, I'll take the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the pool table license for sports, spirits, and steaks at one seventy-eight Main Street to expire on May one, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Menupalli. Any more discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Raise us the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a quick note on the minutes. I think that some of you may have received a copy of an email from the town clerk, and I'll, I don't believe I have it in the town administrator's report for this meeting, but I will put it in for a future meeting. But there have been changes in the open meeting law, which require a more timely review of minutes for approval. Fortunately, we've been very good. We generally come back to the next meeting with our minutes available, and the board generally approves them right away. So, I don't think it's going to have much by way of a functional impact on us, but what it may do is impact our ability to defer the approval of minutes in the future, even when an agenda might be running pretty late. So, it's just something we'll need to be mindful of.
Then that's the reason why there's so many on here. It's my fault, I'm the one that requested that we defer those last, the first three in that meeting that was running late that evening.
That's right.
So, I apologize.
And that was prior to the new regulations being in effect, by the way, so...
Mr. Masari.
Michael?
Yes, sir.
When I read that from the town clerk, there are circumstances where a delay of the thirty days for a particular set of minutes can occur.
Yes.
With, right, so...
Could you repeat that, Mr. Masari? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
What?
Could you repeat that? I didn't hear what you said.
When I read the town clerk's information, it said that under certain circumstances, minutes, approval of minutes can be delayed beyond the thirty days, but it would, you know...
Is there process?
With appropriate rationale.
And the town clerk approves that if we go over the thirty days?
I'm not sure if she's the approving authority for it, but I believe she was, she issued us an advisory on it, relative to it. So, I don't know whether it needs to be screened with the Attorney General.
I don't think, I don't think we have to be overly concerned because our practices are pretty good.
Yeah, they are pretty good.
They're pretty good, you know, and the advisory is, it's just that, that we should be complying, and this is the, the timeline. But generally, when we pass over minutes, it's because there needs to be something changed or corrected so that they're accurate, or we ran out of time and we're tired.
That's, that's the one question I had about this, was what if we have a particular set of minutes that we really are struggling to finalize?
We have had that case.
Which we have. And all rightfully so, it was all justifiable. How do you, how do you continue, how do you work around that situation? Stay here and deliberate until we're all happy, and I mean...
To my, that, that was executive session, and we went into executive session to deliberate in an executive session many times. So, I'm not sure if that was...
But that, under this scenario, that one took us months.
Right, but that...
Now, under this new law, we, open meeting law, we have to do it within thirty days.
I, I suspect, though, Michael, if...
I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
I think our process is excellent.
This was in place back then, we would take another action.
I'll visit you, I'll bake you a cake with a file in it.
It was always a requirement, and I think this board does a great job. They get it very promptly done, and they're given to us to review, and they're approved or corrected if they need to be corrected, and I think that's the process since I've been here, since before the law change went into effect that was here when I came on the board two years ago. So, I think it's an excellent, I think we're way ahead of a lot of...
Well, our minutes have never been better since Mrs. Brooks, come on board, top-notch. I mean, they are absolutely one hundred percent professional, beautiful, so this is an issue.
Sometimes we confuse you, poor thing, without question.
It's really, no, seriously, it's a tribute to all your work.
Thank you.
So, it's real, we're not going to have a problem meeting this open meeting law.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so that it's clear for anybody watching at home, I'm only bringing this up because of the change in the regulations issued by the Attorney General on this. There's no, no criticism from the outside or otherwise of the board and the practice. Our practices are very good, and I want to make sure that's clear to the community.
No, but it doesn't look too good, because, you know, September fifth is on here. But that's my own fault. I'll take the hit. Okay, I'll take the, the motion for the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September five, two thousand and seventeen regular session minutes as written.
I got a motion, second.
I may just vote, go just for it.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Masari. Any discussion? None heard? None heard? All those in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September five, 2017, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Minypelli. Any discussion? All those, none heard? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. September eleventh.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September eleven, 2017, strategic planning session minutes as written.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Just a quick question. Mr. Gilberto, is there a time when we're gonna be present, presenting the strategic plan to your department? Did I miss it?
Wednesday, November first.
I already have that.
At ten o'clock. I believe you do, but if you don't, that, that's the date of the next meeting.
Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. September eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September eighteen, 2017, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
I got a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye.
And I will abstain, as I was not there at that meeting.
It's four, zero, and one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September eighteen, 2017, executive session minutes as written.
A motion, I have a second by Mrs. Minypelli. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye.
I would abstain as well.
Four, zero, and one. October second, 2017, regular and executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October second, 2017, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Legal bills for August.
Oh, one more. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the August second, 2017, executive session.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Minutes as written.
I got a motion and a second by Mr. Misari. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Now, legal bills for August, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for August 2017 in the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents as follows. Coltman and Page General, eleven thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Coltman and Page Labor, two thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents, and Nine Mill Street, five hundred ninety-two dollars.
I got a second by Mrs. Minypelli. More motion and a second? Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items to note, sorry. Based on the board's regular meeting schedule of the first and third Monday, the November meetings would occur on Monday, November sixth, then Monday, November twentieth. Working with the Finance Department, we anticipating, we anticipate scheduling the tax classification hearing for Monday, November twentieth, and we'll advertise it accordingly. We'll probably be advertising it for eight o'clock PM, but we still need to confirm that.
November, November twentieth?
Yep.
Okay.
Hydrant flushing continues. It takes place on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays and Fridays, typically between the hours of eight AM and three o'clock PM. Details are on the town website. Unfortunately, we were unable to complete preparations for a discussion of the trash and recycling collection contract for tonight's meeting. However, we anticipate bringing information to the board at the meeting on November sixth. A friendly reminder that the Community Planning Commission is working towards a housing production plan, as authorized at town meeting. Public meeting was held in June, and a survey is being developed, and another public meeting will be held later in the fall. The board will be asked to adopt the plan once it is finalized. A draft of the executive summary is attached to my report, and additional information is available on the CPC webpage under Grants and Projects. I attached notes from a marijuana forum that was sponsored by the Massachusetts Municipal Association, attended by Youth Director, Youth Services Director, Amy Luckowitz. The libraries have, library trustees have approved the strategic plan as required by state statute, and a copy was also attached to my report. And finally, just as a brief update on the town employee appreciation luncheon that was held on Friday at the Hillview Commission, we had very good attendance with sixty-seven employees attending and staying for the event. I want to thank Human Resources Director Bob Collins, Benefits Coordinator Allison Olson, and Karen Marlin, my administrative assistant, for their efforts to pull together a nice event over at the Hillview. I want to thank the sixty-seven employees who attended and participated in the activity that we conducted, and I want to thank selectwoman Minypelli for coming and speaking on behalf of the board, and selectman Misari for attending as well. So, thank you. And I believe that concludes my report.
Wonderful.
Mrs. Minypelli, would you lead us off for old and business?
Sure, sure, yes, that was great. I want, I wanted to know what a great job that was. That was a fun, it was a fun luncheon and fun learning, new facts, little facts about people that were there. And so, thank you for that, and thank Bob for that. And just to remind people, Veterans Day is coming up in the town services. So, it's only a couple of weeks away, it's only a few weeks away, November eleventh, to keep that in mind and mark that day. It's something that, that Veteran Services Coordinator has events planned for the town common, so just, just keep that in mind as something special to commemorate that day.
Will you be speaking? Will you be giving the address that day?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't know if that was decided, was it?
Usually the liaison does it, so.
Oh, okay.
But if you, if you don't have time, just let one of us know, and one of us will give them the speaking.
Okay.
On behalf of the board, so. Let us know. Anything else?
I don't mind.
Okay.
Happy to do it.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who came out. I want to thank Parks and Rec, first of all, for getting Get Fit North Reading off the ground. We had over thirty people show up on Saturday at the park, all different levels of runners. The program's still open, it's gonna meet on Saturdays up until Thanksgiving, so the graduates will be running in the North Reading Turkey Trot, hopefully, but a great group of people, and the more the merrier, come out next Saturday, IRP at nine in the morning.
Anything else, Mr. Schultz? Oh, Mr. Misari.
I just, again, want to thank Bob, Allison, and Karen for their efforts, the employee appreciation luncheon. It was a good turnout, and I think all of our employees deserve recognition for their efforts throughout the year, servicing us as basically members of the community, rather than boards of selectmen, but, you know, it was a good opportunity to give them thanks for, for their efforts. And I think, you know, based on what I observed, they appreciated. It was a good turnout.
Anything else, Mr. Misari?
Just one other thing.
Sure.
You know, I have been attending the Cable Advisory Committee meetings. There is one coming up this week on Wednesday, Thursday. I have to look at my calendar.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And, you know, the, the biggest, well, I mean, the Cable Advisory Committee's working to try to get a contract with Comcast, but there is the outstanding issue of Comcast saying you can't use the Inet, and the IT department's taking a look at other options, and it's gonna end up in the Capitol Committee's discussions coming up soon. That's all here.
Thank you. Mr. O'Leary.
Just a follow-up from town meeting. I've actually had some comments in relation to the town meeting and how well it went, but I've had a couple of people request whether or not we could have the slides on the water presentation put on the website or available to the public somehow.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a problem, or?
No, we, we've had the water in, on the website before.
It was before, yes. It's most recent round. It has not.
Okay, so if you just put that up, and I'll refer them there, and they can look at it all they want. And then, just the other thing is, the Athletics Facility Subcommittee, in the, in case you didn't notice driving by, see the transcript this week, the old snack shack is gone, and construction has begun, and things are progressing, so that's all very positive. And other than that, all set. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I do want to send my apologies to the staff here, because I did not make the employee appreciation luncheon. I was at my daughter's parent weekend, started Friday morning. You know, most colleges, you go to this football games and pep rallies, and, well, my daughter goes to a music college, so I was at ear training and concerts, and it was a little different for me, so. But I do apologize for missing, and I'm glad that we're making the effort and the time to really recognize the staff. It's important, because they do a lot. You know, when you step back and you look at our budgets, and we get a lot done for the money we spent, tremendous amount, and it's really all them. So, and the town administrator, you've done a great job assembling this team and taking the team that you had when you got here, and I think you've made them all better, and I think they appreciate you, and they work hard for you, and I want to thank them for that as well. I wanted to just follow up on the email I had sent out to the board members about the reality fair that they hold at the high school. It's on November ninth, and the reality fair is, I did it last year, I participated. I was one of the signees to a finance for insurance, and it's amazing how many of the high school students didn't even know what insurance was. They didn't even know you need insurance for vehicles. So, it was really educational, and it was, and I loved it. And if any board member can give up about four hours that day, it starts at seven AM and ends at one PM, it's, I think you will enjoy it as much as I did, and certainly, if you have any finance background, they could certainly use a few more individuals that have any.
What day was that, Michael? I'm sorry.
It's, um, November ninth, from seven to one PM. Mr. O'Leary, I did not volunteer you, but you probably have more of the financial background than anyone else on the board, based with your taxation experiences, so. And they do have a whole section that day on taxes, so if you have an opportunity to...
Just have to explain how they can avoid.
It would be a great reality check, to get it from an expert. And I only have one other thing, and it goes back to town meeting, and I do appreciate all the work that was done by the board members to prepare. I think we did a great job. It was certainly an interesting town meeting, and but I want to thank the voters. I thought there was a fairly good number, and there was a lot of serious issues, and certainly, the water continues to be a challenge, and thank you, Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Misari, for putting together the presentation. You know, since then, I've been thinking about this whole thing, and it's one thing I would like to ask the board to think, to reconsider. You know, we did this FXM report, if you recall, on Concord Street. They studied Concord Street, what it would look like if we had sewerage on Concord, along Concord Street, that mile and a half stretch, and the new revenues that would come from that were pretty significant back then, I believe it was in 2010, and the dollars associated was around 2015. So, I would like us to revisit that report. I'm not sure if it's a very easy to have someone look at it and look at those numbers, but when you look at, you know, I kind of hear if we don't go MWRA, we may lose the Concord Street sewerage, and, you know, that's revenue, almost two million dollars of revenue annually that we could potentially lose down the road forever. And I think that has to be part of our discussion in the equation. When you start looking at that line from that graph that you provided, that showed the separation associated with the savings and the increases and the decreases of MWRA, I think those numbers also need to be attributed to that if we're not gonna be able to get the Concord Street sewerage put in. I just think it's gonna be part of the discussion. So, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I'm just, well, I, maybe I'm not up to date, as far as the discussions with MWRA and the potential for tying in with the sewerage. I didn't get the impression, from what I've heard to date, that there's a quid pro quo from the MWRA. If you don't go with us for water, you're not gonna get the sewerage. Haven't gotten that impression. Maybe they're couching it or hiding it. And I would hope not, because, you know, it's economic development. I mean, this administration, you know, this governor and this administration, like the previous one, has very, been very focused on economic growth and development, particularly along major highways like ninety-three. I also know that there's a major initiative of being undertaken up in Andover. You know, of course, Andover already has sewerage, they're running off of Daskum Road, but the state is committing a significant amount of money for infrastructure changes there, coupled with some zoning changes in Andover, hugely significant.
Yeah.
And I would think similarly, you know, they would be looking at this prospect the same way, so I would hope so.
I would also do.
You know, I would hope so.
But I, I just don't want us to lose sight of the revenue that would, if they didn't.
No, they, they get, as far as for us to realize that kind of revenue, it's not an overnight.
No.
Sewerage, you're gonna get two million dollars.
No.
It's down the road. Conversely, you know, the ability now, and the likelihood, if we were to go with Andover, and being able to tie in with great a lot of sewer, a less cumbersome trail to get there, is certainly, you know, significant also, as far as.
Yeah.
Commitment we would have to make to, to put it in, obviously, but, you know, if you run it down twenty-eight, go all the way to Concord Street. Might take, you know, five years longer, but the realization is still gonna be there. But along the way, you're also going to address Route twenty-eight, which I think we're gonna see significant economic growth and development if we were able to put in the sewerage, and being able to facilitate that process is worth something, too. So, but, if the numbers need to be updated and take a look at it, that's fine.
I'd just like to report, maybe, because I think some of you have some new members that may have never had the opportunity to read that report.
Mm-hmm.
I think it would be valuable for them to have an opportunity to read it, and for us to probably reread it ourselves, and if, maybe after you read it, you think that maybe worth spending a little extra money to have it updated, you know, we can discuss it maybe at a future meeting, but I would at least like us to share it, maybe under correspondence or somehow.
Is that still in Dropbox?
It is.
Yeah, I think, I think.
If we could identify the location.
Maybe put an email out saying where it is.
Yeah, that would be helpful, if somebody could do that. Okay.
But I think it's both, I mean, we're very fortunate, you know, right now, as far as the water issue, and as far as the ability to really see some sort of likelihood of sewerage coming in North Reading.
Yeah.
Probably the closest I've seen in forty-three years, forty-four years, so it's a great thing.
It's certainly a lifeline.
Yeah.
If we really truly want to talk about tax rate stabilization, it has to tie with sewerage. It's the only way.